Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Kingston Planning Board for June 4th, 2024. It is 6:47 PM. This evening, this is not a public hearing night. This is a board business night. We do have a couple of letters that we're going to be talking about. We also have a couple of zoning ordinances we're going to be talking about. And I think, and accepting the minutes. I think that's about it. So, I'd like to introduce the people at the table. To my left is Code Enforcement Officer Pedro Avila. Avila? Okay. Sorry, just want to make sure I pronounced it correctly. Planning Board member, Rob Trasolo. Planning Board member, oh my God, Ben Romano. Planning Board member, Peter Coffin. I'm Lynn Merrill. I'm the chair, getting off to a rocky start. To my right is Robin Carter, who is our land use administrator. Eli Alessio, who is the Select Board representative. Liam Jerome, who is our planning board alternate. And in the missing chair will be Robin Dugay, who will be joining us shortly, probably within the next 15 or so minutes. And last but not least is our planner, Glenn Greenwood. So, the first thing I'd like to do tonight is accept the board minutes. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes, Peter?
Yeah, move to accept them.
May 7th minutes with the spelling correction on line 318 of what the work weather. That was it.
Do we have a second? Second, Liam? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous. Thank you. The next is correspondence from reference to 49 Back Road, which is map R42-5. And everyone has received the letter. Everybody received it well in advance of the meeting. And it says, Dear Mr. Greenwood, I present, probably represent John Hartwell, who owns 49 Back Road. This letter is sent to request a date and time to meet with the Kingston Planning Board to obtain guidance relative to my client's proposed improvement of part of the back road right-of-way to provide access to a single-family home. More specifically, and as required by RSA 674:41, my client is requesting guidance from the board as to the construction standard which would apply to that driveway. We are not requesting the board to approve a full upgrade of Back Road to Class V standards or to impose any maintenance responsibilities on the town. I have enclosed a draft plan with this letter for the board's review. By way of further information, we met with the Kingston Board of Selectment on February 5th, 2024, to discuss this same matter. The consensus when we closed the discussion was that we should discuss the level of improvements that we had proposed with the board and then update the Selectment before approaching the Kingston zoning board. Please confirm the date and time. We will be on the board's agenda. I look forward to hearing from you. Sincerely yours, Patricia Pansiacco. Good guess. So, I see that Attorney Pansiacco is here with us tonight. We had a request from the Board of Selectmen to please review this and go back to the Selectmen with some sort of recommendation from the planning board. Is that correct, Eli? Okay. So, how would you all like to proceed?
Start with Glenn's comments usually.
Okay. Who's?
Glenn has comments.
Glenn? Start with your comments.
Do you want me to read this?
Sure.
All right. So, on May 30th, I wrote a memo for the Kingston Planning Board, and it reads as follows. John Hartman, 42-5, 49 Back Road, the property owner and their attorney have met with the Board of Selectmen to gain permission from the town to build a single-family residence on a Class VI highway that is closed subject to gates and bars. The BOS, using guidance found in RSA 674-41A1, has asked the planning board to weigh in on this, on this request. The town's zoning ordinance states at Article 301, Section 301, 1A, that every building lot shall have a minimum contiguous frontage of 200 feet on a public right-of-way. And the ordinance further clarifies that public right-of-way means only those highways that qualify as Class 1 through 5 under the provisions of RSA 229:5. The subject parcel does not meet this requirement. From, from my experience here in the town, that standard has been in existence the entire time I've worked here. So, for 35 years, the, the standard has been unless a Class VI road is upgraded to town standard, a building permit isn't granted for it.
I think we've got correspondence. Read that in.
Okay. Start again. The Southeast Land Trust has sent a letter to the Kingston Planning Board, and it reads as follows. I am writing on behalf of the Southeast Land Trust of New Hampshire, CELT, regarding the proposal from Mr. Hartwell to improve the Class VI Back Road in Kingston in order to build a single-family home on his property on tax map R42 Lot 5. CELT owns the abutting parcels at tax map R42 lots 3, 4, 7, and 14, as well as holds a conservation easement on the town-owned land at tax map 42 Lot 6. We understand that Mr. Hartwell is requesting guidance from the planning board. This guidance is regarding the construction standard which the town would apply to have a portion of the road service a driveway. Our understanding is it would be the segment of Back Road from the Danville Town Line to his property. We also understand that this request is despite the fact that Mr. Hartwell's lot doesn't meet the requirement that the lot shall have a minimum contiguous frontage of 200 feet on a Class V or better highway as required by the town zoning ordinance provision. As you are likely aware, CELT owns the approximately 600-acre Tucker and French Family Forest, located in both Danville and Kingston, which has frontage along Back Road in both towns. CELT's ownership is on both the north and south side of Back Road from the Danville Town Line to Mr. Hartwell's property. CELT has several concerns with Back Road being improved for use as a residential driveway, including conflicts with the recreational uses of Back Road, impacts to wetlands, and impacts to threatened and endangered species. As we pointed out at the Kingston Select Board meeting on February 4th, 2024, should a portion of Back Road be used as a driveway to access a residence, there will likely be conflict with the recreational uses of Back Road. One such conflict is with the use of Back Road by the Southern New Hampshire Trailblazers Snowmobile Club. The snowmobiles use a portion of Back Road, including the portion adjacent to Mr. Hartwell's land. Back Road serves as, as a connection between the French North Trail on CELT's land to the north of Back Road, to the Spofford Mill Trail on CELT's land to the south of Back Road. I have attached a trail map of the Tucker and French Family Forest for reference. As a residential driveway, would need to be plowed for access in the winter. This would remove access for the snowmobile club's utilization of Back Road, as well as sever an important north-south connector to their larger trail network. Additionally, improvement of Back Road increases the potential for recreational uses of CELT's land to utilize Back Road with their vehicles. CELT does not have an existing parking area off Back Road, and we do not have any intentions of creating one. This leaves recreational users the option of parking alongside the road, creating potential for conflict both with the Hartwells and future owners, as well as with emergency vehicles. This conflict would be up to the town to handle as CELT cannot restrict people from parking on public roads. CELT also has concerns regarding impacts to wetlands on our property. A large wetland crosses Back Road in Danville, creating a significant barrier for driveway access. Improvements to Back Road would negatively impact the wetlands within the public road and lightly impact the adjoining additional wetlands along Back Road on CELT's land in Kingston, leading up to Mr. Hartwell's property. As you may be aware, the Tucker and French Family Forest has a federally-held conservation easement on it, with the wetlands a primary driver for the protection of this land. Any impacts to wetlands due to the improvement of Back Road are of concern to CELT and would need to be understood and reviewed by the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service, the federal agency which holds the conservation easement. In addition, we'd like to make the town aware of potential impacts to threatened and endangered species that we know are on the Tucker and French Family Forest. Both the spotted turtle, a spotted turtle, threatened and landing turtle endangered are on CELT's property, which is entirely within a Tier 2 landing turtle conservation-focused area. Any impacts to these species because of improvements to Back Road should be understood and reviewed by both CELT and NRCS, as well as other applicable state agencies. CELT is also aware that a, that the portion of Back Road in Danville, just prior to the Kingston Town Line, was possibly designated as a Class A trail by town warrant around 1995. We have been in touch with the town of Danville, who is searching the town records to confirm this. Should this be the case, this would further complicate the use of that portion of Back Road as a residential driveway for a new single-family home. We suggest that it is premature for the town of Kingston to consider this request until such time as the status of the Danville portion of Back Road is understood. In conclusion, it is our opinion that the proposed use of Back Road as a private driveway is inconsistent with the town's zoning ordinance, with detrimental impacts to the public's use and enjoyment of Back Road, significant impacts to wetlands and imperiled wildlife, and negative impacts on abutting property owners. Therefore, we request the town of Kingston decline allowing the improvement of, or use of, Back Road as a private driveway. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns and requests. Sincerely, Deborah Gourd, Stewardship and Land Engagement Director. So, we have that. Do we have any other comments?
I would point out that those of us who watched the OEP Planning and Zoning Conference will have remembered that Steve Buckley, the New Hampshire Municipal Association Attorney, directly addressed the issue of building on Class VI roads and said that because the basic purpose of requiring the frontage is to ensure that a dwelling may be reached by the fire department, police department, and other agencies charged with the responsibilities of protecting the public peace, safety, and welfare, that termed "safety and welfare" is the overriding factor in determining what kind of structures can be built on Class VI roads. And he specifically mentioned things like a sugar shack, which is not an occupied structure, could be granted a building permit because it wouldn't affect the safety and welfare of the public. Whereas a residence would have to be on a five, Class V, and, and as we have, towns can make that, that rule, that it'd be on a Class V or better road. And so, I'd kind of be interested to know what, is Graham Pellerin still here? Yes. No? Oh, there you are. Okay. What the fire department's requirements are for access, and since this is coming in from Danville, how the fire department would feel about that, and what the turning radius is for bringing a fire truck in and creating a road, which I guess would have to be built on the subject property, a loop, turnaround with that required radius, and things like that. So, if it's okay with the chair, I would think that some input from a department head who is here anyway would be useful.
Chief?
So, in the town of Kingston, when we have questions about driveways, so if a residence is so far off, you know, any road, whether it's Class VI or 1 through 5, we have a driveway ordinance, and the builder has to meet all NFPA codes. So, that's where it specifies that for a driveway over 150 feet, I believe, it has to be 20 feet wide, 20 feet tall to accommodate the largest fire truck, a ladder truck, and at the end of the driveway either needs a cul-de-sac or a turnaround, a hammerhead, so he can back in and then pull out. The 20 feet wide, just so that two trucks or a truck and an ambulance can pass simultaneously in and out for, for ease of access. I do know the project. We actually met with the homeowner out there at the building site with Phil Coombs, the director of DPW, and the director of DPW for Danville as well. I, I work closely with Jeff Murphy, who's on this project, on other projects. I have advised him that the house needs to be sprinkled, which he agreed that it would be, and that the driveway, if granted by the town of Kingston and/or Danville, would need to be, meet all those specifications in the ordinance and NFPA. We do have at least one other residence in Danville at the end of Rock Remen Road that the house lot is in Kingston, but 90% of the time, Danville responds, and when we get called there, it's actually both towns get toned to that same location. So, if, we do have other residents in town that are only accessed through other towns.
Right. Well, that one in Danville specifically, up at Rock Remen, the driveway is on a Class V town road.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just addressing.
It's very, very different. It was part of a subdivision that, so it's not accessed by a Class VI road in Kingston.
Yep. And the same, I think, holds true for the home on Brookside, and the home on Hickory, and Concanon.
Correct.
They're all Class V roads.
So, after meeting with them out at the building site, the access from the paved ending of Back Road to his driveway or his residence, where, where the proposal is, again, as long as for access for the fire department, as long as it's 20 feet wide, 20 feet tall, and meets all other requirements by, just, and again, this has nothing to do with what class road it is, this is just access for the fire department, as long as it's, meets the town ordinance for driveways and NFPA, then I don't have a problem with it.
So, for a turnaround, what's your radius, the outside part of the radius for the turnaround?
So, we, I actually have to do this for, I met with Charlie Zilch on another project today, and for any turning radius, we use the largest truck that we would call to the town of Kingston, which would be Exodus Ladder Truck. So, we have a formula that we use. So, it doesn't matter if it's the Shell Station parking lot, all of their turning radiuses to get around the parking lot has to.
Right.
Meet our truck.
So, do you happen to know what that is because?
I have it at the office. I actually have to email it to Charlie Zilch tomorrow morning, so I can email it to the board as well.
Yeah. So, you, but that's, and if you had a hammerhead, you could not go, you couldn't put the hammerhead off to the other side, off the south side of, of the road, because that wouldn't be on, the property wouldn't be on.
Well, the hammerhead is at the end of where the, where the residence is.
Where the house is.
At the very end of the driveway. So, if it's more than 400 feet, the hammerhead has to be.
So, you're saying where the driveway would turn off of Back Road, because Back Road isn't the driveway, so the driveway would turn in off of Back Road and then go into a turnaround or a hammerhead on, on the property?
So, if it's.
Yes.
Maybe? Sure. Liam says yes. He's also a firefighter.
Okay, yeah. So, I just want to make sure that you understood that you couldn't put a hammerhead on Back Road because.
Yeah. On, on the ordinance, it shows a definitive picture that, like basically, we usually do it across from their garage, if it's a drive-on garage or whatever, so that we're at the residence, and we drive the truck all the way down in there, that we can then pull in and turn around and drive out. We don't have to back out. It's a safety, safety issue if we're backing that far out.
But for, when you were using the term driveway, you're talking about the, the point from the Back Road into where the house is going to be built, would be built.
Yes. I would, I know it's, I know there's a section of Back Road that he, that he would be traveling on, and then to his driveway.
Yeah.
But as long as that entire access point meets NFPA and our driveway ordinance.
Right. Yeah. And I, I think that judging from our ordinance, you'd have to create a Class V road in.
Yep. And again, I'm, I'm just addressing the access for the fire department.
So.
So, that's, so I think what the chief is saying is if a driveway is to be built, the driveway is to be built to town standards for driveways to allow for emergency access.
The driveway, right. Yeah, I was thinking he was talking about Back Road.
But the big question becomes, does Back Road become a driveway or not?
It can't.
Well, and, and again, that's, that's up to these.
That's up to us.
Ladies and gentlemen here, not, not myself.
Yeah.
But we also have other roads in town that do not meet town standards. They're not 20 feet wide, they're not, so, and people are building on those. But, so, my only thing is if the town of Danville and the town of Kingston decide that he can build out there, that Back Road as well would need to, minimally for me, for access, would need to meet that 20 feet wide, 20 feet tall.
Right. And because Back Road has always been a Class VI, it, obviously, this would require a survey be done anyway, but you couldn't increase the width to the current Class V standards. If, if the Selectmen decided they would want a Class V road built in there, they would have to, you'd have to purchase, say that Back Road is currently 30 feet wide or whatever, 25 feet wide, whatever the standard was at the time, they would have to purchase from the abutters enough road to make it 50, 60 feet wide, whatever the current town standard is. And it sounds to me that the abutters aren't going to sell.
I, I don't know what the width of the current road is.
Yeah, I think if.
If it's 30 feet, then they would be able to obtain 20 feet.
Yeah. It's, well, it's, it's Class V standard for constructing a town road right now, I think, is 60 feet, but I'm, you'd have to look that up. It is, yeah. Okay, thank you.
60 feet.
So, what?
Right. The right of the ass is 60 feet.
Right. The paved, paved first surface wouldn't, but, but you'd have to, you'd have to purchase additional right-of-way, either on either, both sides or on, on one side, to make that, to double the width of that right-of-way, so that.
To be a 60-foot right.
Yeah, to be a 60-foot right-of-way. And so, I'm thinking that's, that right there is a nonstarter. And I would also say that the, just judging from, from building trails and what has, what the DES requires for wetlands and everything else, that for road work in, through a wetland, which is on, on both sides of, of this property, but especially on the Danville side, would require some very extensive, well, this isn't related to the fire, but thanks for the comments.
Sure.
The, the wetland requirements would be significant, and would, they involve maintenance So, you know, I, I think that the, the public safety issue is, is the big one. And I'm kind of surprised that they were talking about bringing it in from Danville because, you know, typically, if you're going to be responding to an emergency out there, you'd want to be coming in from the Kingston side, not driving all the way around Brentwood and Danville to, to get to the, to the point. And I'll turn it back over, but I think, I think the, the requirements to upgrade this to a Class V road, regardless of whether Danville has made that a Class A trail or not, just would be significant and, and not really feasible, and require some, some problems that I, I think are insurmountable, judging from, from what I've seen.
Okay. Any other comments, thoughts? Pedro?
Good afternoon. My name is Pedro Avila. I am the Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer for the town of Kingston. More than comments, I just have questions with regards to the development. If this was to be an option, and we're talking about long driveway in here, what is the, the expectation to be set? Does the town have to do some maintenance on it? Are there going to be some clauses on it on how to, how it has to be maintained, and how often has to be maintained in the event of an emergency? And what if an emergency vehicle cannot access that pathway? Who is responsible? Who is liable on that end? I mean, those are just questions with regards to safety and the, the development of this piece of land that I think should be taken into consideration. I mean, I'm not the DPW director. My, my, my expertise is in the edge of the structure and making sure sprinkle system and things like that, but those are questions that kind of raise a concern and with regards to that type of development. And those are the only inputs that I will have.
Right. I think the, in the attorney's letter, they would say, they have said that the town would not assume any responsibility for maintenance. However, that being said, it does put an onus on future purchasers. They're going to inherit this liability because one of the things that's required before any approval is given is that the, a recorded waiver of liability is required to be recorded at the Rockham deeds. And the, one of the requirements would be that this doesn't impose any undue burden on future owners. And I think the maintenance of a Class V road through wetlands and the appropriate infrastructure that has to be built, bridges, whatever else, to, to accommodate that, to town standards, which is what the town has, as Glenn pointed out, required, that would put a significant financial burden on a future owner that, so, but, but no, the town would not inherit any liability for, for maintenance, and that would be as per a, a, a recorded document.
So, Kingston's practice in the past has been more in the, in the way of turning Class VI roads into trails and into recreational areas rather than turning them into Class V roads. That's been more of our history in the, in the more recent past.
Especially this one, which is, for those of us who've been out there, I think, when out this evening, coming to, it, it's one of the worst Class VI roads we have in town. Makes Rock Remen look like a, you know, a little, it's, it's horrible. It's, it really should have been designated a Class A trail when, when that Danville did.
I think I've been on that road from start to finish for about eight years, and the last time we went out, it was near impossible.
Yeah.
Because of, of nature.
I rode my mountain bike from one end to the other and back, from Danville side to Kingston and then back, and I mean, I was going through a foot of water and a bunch of different places.
Yeah.
So, I think do be a considerable undertaking to turn that into a Class V road. But that's the goal here.
In addition, it is a, is a snowmobile trail.
Yeah, sure.
And they've already lost part of that access from the Brentwood area because of the warehouse project. But pretty much, they've got a trail that goes all the way up from the Brentwood line. In fact, it does go from the Brentwood line all the way down through Kingston. And that, that would be a significant loss because that, there's been a lot of time and effort, Peter Begi and others, you know, have put into that.
And I mean, the right side of that road, I don't know if you can picture here, is like a, a large standing body of water that almost looks like it's held up by a beaver dam.
It is.
So, I mean, you're talking multiple culverts, there's significant water load that would be behind that road that would constantly be washing it out, like, I, I, I think that would be a difficult road to maintain.
Yeah, build and maintain both. I. Yeah, New Durham had, had a situation where they had denied it because of narrowness, swampy areas, bad Class VI road, and that was upheld by the courts, their denial in the case in 1989.
Well, we don't approve it or disapprove it, we just give a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, so. Board of Selectmen, so.
7441, that says, after review and comment-
Sorry, the ordinance, the RSA says the local government body, which is the Board of Selectmen, after review and comment by the planning board has, would have to vote to authorize the issuance of building permits-
Correct.
-on said Class 6 highway or portion thereof. And they don't assume any responsibility, all that stuff, so.
Does the planning board wish to take comment from the public? This is not a public hearing night, so therefore we don't talk to the public, is that something we'd like to do? We do have a member, we do have the attorney that would like to speak with us. If you have something to add that is not currently in your letter, you're welcome to do that. So what you have to do is you have to give us your name, where you live, and you have to turn the red button green.
Red button, okay, thanks.
Oh, what? Oh, yeah, oh, if not, would you live where you work?
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chairman, I hope you can hand-
Can we turn the AC off, because we can't hear her?
Mr. AC just came in.
Just in time, thank you.
Okay, for the record, my name is Patricia Pansiaco, I wrote a letter to the Board to ask for this appointment, and I'm here tonight with my client, John Hartwell, and with his engineer, Jeff Murphy from SFC Engineering. We're here to ask for guidance from the planning board on construction standards for a driveway that we would like to propose be built within the back road, formerly Thorn Road right-of-way. The point of access, whether it's through Danville or Kingston, has not been determined as of yet, because as the Board has noted, there are a number of challenges with access, because this road has been in disrepair for so very long, it's, it's quite deteriorated. So, just to give you a little bit of history, this road dates back to well before the turn of the century, and it's one of those ancient roads that's been on the town map since the town had maps. And it connects Danville and Kingston, and for that reason, it can't be fully closed without the cooperation of both towns, that statute. We, we've been exploring this for a while, we met with the Board of Selectmen, they suggested we come and speak with you, and in, under 67441, your role is primarily advisory as to the construction standards that would need to be met for any driveway access, or if it was their choice to upgrade the road to Class 5 standards. Under the statute, I just want to point out, it talks about, they call this the state zoning statute, 67441, because it basically says, you cannot build a new home or subdivide on a Class 6 road unless, and it gives you, under Roman 1, a number of different options. If there's a plan that the planning board's approved, if there is an ancient road the town maintains, or if the local governing body has a process in place where they allow it, and you waive all the liability, and do not expect the town to maintain the road, there's a variety of different options available, but it definitely requires input from all the Boards. But it also says here, whenever the enforcement of the strict application of Section 1 is, it imposes what they call practical difficulty, it gives you the option to go to the zoning Board of Adjustment, and clearly, that would be required here, because as your building inspector has pointed out, you'd need Class 5 frontage to build a new home in Kingston. So with all that said, that's where, that's an overview of where we're at, and that's why we're here tonight. Now, a Class 6 road, I, I know that Selk touched upon it quite a bit, it is a public highway. This was formerly a main road between Danville and Kingston. Over time, other roads probably became available, and this one fell into disrepair. And it designated Class 6, Class 6 roads are referred to in some of the treatises that are published on New Hampshire roads as assets of the town, put on the shelf on the turn of the century, when the populations all went to the cities to find work during the Great Depression. They all left the rural areas, because you couldn't make money out there. And for that reason, a lot of the public roads were no, there was no need to maintain them anymore, because nobody was out there to use them. And here, this is probably one of those roads. I did look into this in great depth, and I have pulled out all the old maps, and it is on every single map. Even Selk's survey plan shows this road in most locations as being almost 60 feet wide, if not more, in most locations. Now, as to that point, needing to acquire property rights and widening this road, that is not the case. That is a new road standard, and under the statute, this Board has the authority to modify improvement standards for existing roads. I would bet you there are many, many roads in the town of Kingston that are not 60 feet wide, and the town isn't running out there saying, okay, we're going to take your properties, because we want a 60-foot right of way. That's just not how it's done. The new standards are prospective going forward. But either way, it appears from the Selk survey, this road is that wide, in most locations, if not all. Now, whether or not it's worth improving this road for the benefit of the few people that are out there to Class 5, I don't think it is. Because if it's improved to a Class 5 road, the town has to maintain it. And why would the town want to invest their well-earned monies that are very hard to find to take care of roads, on taking care of a road that serves so few people? So for that reason, we have to be practical, and my client's proposing to build a driveway to the standards this Board, as the expertise in roads and driveways feels is appropriate and safe with the input from the Fire Department. And we're certainly not looking to put people at risk, so that is why we're here tonight. And clearly, as, as I think Mr. Jerome pointed out, there's some hurdles out there to be met, but that's why we have an engineering company helping us with this, because it's certainly not something that a non-engineer should undertake. As to wetlands, if there are wetlands crossings, the state will have control over those. As to wildlife, the state exclusively controls wildlife, not the town and not Selk. They will look, and as you know, they have a registry for endangered species. They will be protected, and accommodations will be made with the assistance of fish and game, to make sure there's no harm to endangered species, or any species for that matter, like any other development that comes before this Board. What we would propose in this scenario is if we are able to secure the support of the town, there would be a plan proposed. The plan would show exactly what this Board says is required for improvements to the driveway, and it is a driveway. It would be recorded in the Registry of Deeds, it would be indexed to my client's deed, and anybody who comes to own his property when we're no longer here will be on actual notice of the road's status, unless it changes in the meantime. So, I just wanted to kind of lay that out for you. There are lots of Class 6 roads in New Hampshire, they were intended to be put on the shelf until they were needed by the population, and in many cases, especially now when we have such a shortage of housing, at the time might be now, on an individual basis, to approach these roads on a one, one at a time, and say, is it worthwhile to upgrade them or use them on a limited basis, as my client has proposed? He's certainly not, as I said in my letter, looking to impose any responsibility on the town. It's a driveway that he will be exclusively obligated to maintain, and of course, it will comply with your regulations, as well as the Fire Department regulations. Our engineer is also a specialist in fire protection, and that's by design here, because we know that that's the purpose of frontage, safety, emergency access, and spacing between dwellings. And we have the right man for the job, who is here, and he has some other thoughts to share with you, so if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to let Jeff address the Board and talk about that.
I have a legal question first.
Sure.
So if you're going to put a driveway on a town road, it's still a town road.
Absolutely.
It's still accessed by the town, by people on either side.
Yep.
It has to be accessed by snowmobiles, which would mean, all of a sudden now, you're taking away the snow, and therefore they can't ride their snowmobiles down there, unless you have some sort of a trail or something adjacent to it-
Mm-hmm.
...that would accommodate that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm not sure how the legal, how it would work to put a private road on a public roadway.
Well, let me just say this.
A private driveway, I should say.
It's a good question, because you're right, that we're hearing there's snowmobiles out there that use it, but snowmobiles aren't allowed on public ways. That's a public road. We're not here to tell you that we won't do our best to get along, but it's an automotive vehicle. And, like I said, we will do our best to avoid interfering with their reasonable use, but my client's rights to use that road are equal to Selk. Selk does not own that road, and Selk does not own his property, he's entitled to a reasonable use of that. And as I said, if Selk wants to look at any kinds of plans, we're more than happy to share them, it's public information. Why can't neighbors learn to get along? That's my point, but I have yet to see a snowmobile on a public road.
Actually, Class 6-
I guess I could see one out there, right?
Class 6, if you actually look at the statute, are-
That's fine.
ATV's, a municipality can allow ATV's and snowmobiles and all sorts of any motorized vehicle it wants on a Class 6 road.
Okay.
In fact, cannot deny that access.
And vehicles can too, so we've got to all learn to get along, and it is quite a wide right-of-way, so.
I also was a member of that snowmobile club, if it helps-
Oh, that's helpful.
Discussion, you know, I have snowmobiles, my children have one, you know, if anybody in this town that may help aid that access, you know, I think I'm right for that as well.
Okay.
Are there any rights, ways, easements, grants, in the deeds to Selk or to your property at all?
On your property?
The power line that runs through there does have some old easements with some limited information, and then individual properties have their own conservation easements or otherwise, but the main easement, other than, I think would just be the power line that runs through there.
On your property, right, John?
Yep.
Okay, so, on John's property.
Most of the road, it kind of meanders adjacent to the road, over the road, throughout that section.
Okay, Mr. Engineer, would you please introduce yourself?
Sure, my name is Jeff. I am the President of SFC Engineering out of Wyndham, New Hampshire. We've been working on this project for several years now, kind of in the background, helping kind of develop what happened out here. I think everybody on this Board has kind of summarized the property pretty well. I think we are here with open arms, recognizing, as, as Mr. Jerome said, that, you know, there are some challenges to the engineering side of getting access out here, and there's a lot of moving parts to make all of this work. So what I was hoping we could get to a little bit tonight is understanding the challenges and trying to understand the hierarchical importance of those challenges to the various stakeholders on this project, so that as we start to work through the engineering solutions, all of the concerns of stakeholders become part of that solution, as opposed to potshotting and responding to, what about this, what about that, what about this? As Ms. Pansiacco said, there are two ways into this property, one through Danville, one through Kingston. There's a cost-benefit analysis that needs to be done, and understanding what type of upgrades are preferred will help make decisions on that design process, so that we're achieving the goal of all parties. I think the intent of everybody up till this meeting has been not to create a Class 5 road. Other town agencies that we've talked to have shown concern about it becoming a Class 5 road, and have tried to work through making sure it doesn't become a Class 5 road for the, the added cost and maintenance of the town. So that's kind of why this idea of using it in as minimal impact as we can to what's there, to provide safe and reasonable access for both the owner and emergency services, I, I've had many conversations with the chief, to make sure we understood those concerns as well. But there's, there's a lot of moving parts, so that was really where I think the Select Board asked us to come here tonight, is to gain that input, because we do want to pursue this in a, in a reasonable and collaborative measure, to, to try and find the best way for Mr. Hartwell to be able to use his property as, as he'd like to. So, go ahead.
I just want to, I think, clarify something that, that Pat brought up, and that is that as a Board, we have a policy for creating roads and developments, say, you know, because what we normally do, and that is that a town, that a road be built to Class 5, to town standards, not that you build a Class 5 road. Okay, and there's a difference.
Correct.
This is because we've had developments that have built substandard roads, and that have wanted to try to get them accepted, you know, the ones, the builders out of there and sold all those units and everything, the residents come, and they're Kingston residents, and they say, we want to try to get this accepted as a town road. Well, the radiator's too small, and the shoulders are too narrow and wide, not drained, whatever else, it would cost a lot of money, or it'd be impossible, because the house is already built, to, to upgrade it to a town standard road. So what we've required is that the roads that are private roads be built to town standards, not that they become town roads. And this confusion about using the term driveway in talking about, as Lynn pointed out, a town road cannot be a driveway, it's one or the other. The driveway is the portion that leaves the town road. So the, the only part that we're talking about is the part that's currently town road, it's Class 6, and there's no intent to, to make that a Class 5 road. I'm sure that there's nobody on this Board who, who would recommend that that be made a Class 5 road. We, what we would normally require is if you're going to improve a road to, to get access, that it be improved to the standard. It'll still be a town road, it'll still be an unmaintained town road, in other words, if it gets washed out in a spring flood, the town's not going to come and maintain it, because it's a Class 6 road. But there's nothing in 67441, by the way, that, and the Selectmen didn't send this here for construction standards. I think that's the other part that's getting confused, that we have the town DPW director here, but the, the zoning Board has control over the standards for driveways, and that's not what we're doing here. This would be an individual driveway leaving back road, and Phil would make the decisions on the standards for that. So we're not, we don't set this town construction standards, and that is not why we're sent. They're sent because 7, 67441 says the local governing- six road or a portion thereof. So that's the only reason we're here is review and comment, not to develop standards. The fact, the reason we mentioned the whole business about bringing up to town standards is that that is what the planning board always requires because of issues in the past where a private road has, has not been built to standards and they want to get it accepted. So that, those are the things where I think we're getting confused about.
I, I agree. And I, Pat, please interrupt me if I get the legality of this wrong because it's, I'm not an attorney. I think everything would be fixed with engineering, not necessarily. Back road is currently a town road. There are procedures in 764 to allow the community to permit construction of a single-family home on a class six road. In order to do that, we need to provide safe and reasonable access as part of that standard. That will require, I think we can all admit, right? That will require modifications to the current back road. And I believe those modifications are what this board has a voice in. And we're going to be coming forward with proposed upgrades to back road to provide safe and reasonable access to the property. And the intent was to come to this board tonight and glean some input on, I think we want to do as minimal as possible for all of the reasons that have been presented in, in good practice tonight. Not to create a new road standard of a class five road, but what is the appropriate level of upgrade? So I think we've been using the term driveway as a kind of analogy to what we're trying to minimally impact back road to provide safe and reasonable access. And perhaps using the driveway standard becomes appropriate for what back road would need for modifications to safely build. So I think that it's not saying that back road becomes a driveway, but what, what needs to be done to back road to allow that?
Do you look at the driveway standards instead of road standards to, to put the road?
Because we believe the community
Would prefer
Doesn't want it to meet a road standard.
... narrower than a full width road.
Well, we find out in the community.
Well, and in fact, just so you know, under 23613 Roman V, the same power is concerning highways in their jurisdiction conferred upon DOT by that paragraph, but conferred on the planning board to, over driveways.
Driveways. And that is the whole point I was trying to make, is the planning board has control over driveways.
Absolutely. So that's another reason why.
And that's the portion from back road to the house.
That's exactly right. And the standards they're constructed to.
Not for back roads.
Well, no, the selecting does.
That, the definition you just read, Mike, that conveys, I'm sorry. May I speak? What I believe Peter was saying is the discussion of driveway from our perspective is the distance from back road to the residents, not the 1,500 feet proposed from the end of pavement in Danville on back road to the property boundary of the, of the present property owner.
So we're, yes, so.
So, so to talk about driveway standards and to make them roadway standards is it, it's not a concept the planning board, I believe, wants to undertake.
Nor is it a precedent we'd want to set.
Exactly. And to that end, by the way, the fact that there are other houses in Kingston, like the one in, let's see, Danville, the each, we don't have a, a policy in this town and every single case is a case by case basis.
That's right.
And is accepted on a case by, and you're talking about one property.
But all of those homes are on class five roads.
And that's all fine and good. They had that option available. This property does not. Does that mean this property has no use?
No, it has plenty of use.
It has, but it doesn't necessarily have the use as a building lot.
Well, I don't know.
And when they purchased, I mean, it was, it was quite clear when that lot was purchased that it was not being, that could not be a building lot.
Not in this present state. But that does not prevent somebody from trying to go through the proper process as dictated by the statute to meet the concerns of the town, to accommodate, and I'm saying a driveway from the end of the paved section all the way in and then into the property, the 1,500 feet, from the house down to the paved driveway, for instance. I'm thinking driveway.
I, I definitely understand what you're saying.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm speaking clear too.
We, we, I, we absolutely understand what you're saying.
Right.
Taking all that into consideration for wetlands too.
Absolutely.
We get it. What you're trying to do is, is build a road, is rebuild that road to a driveway standard.
Um, I think maybe.
For the benefit of one house.
For the benefit of one, one property.
On a property that has never been considered a building lot.
Correct. So some of what you've been saying, you've said with the will of the town, would you be willing to weigh in on this?
Absolutely.
We'd like to hear from our director of public works.
What part do you want to talk about? There's a lot here. I think you brought up a good point, Lynn, where this has been reaffirmed by the voters on many votes, you know, that this is a recreation area. This is one of the few spots in town where ATVs and snowmobiles operate. There is a road in Danville right over North Road on Beach Plain Road called Cross Road, and it goes from Beach Plain Road over to Back Road. They had made the mistake of allowing someone a permit off of that road. Similar to the driveway route was undertaken. There was an armed confrontation there because a bunch of kids were riding their dirt bike on a class six road, and this gentleman insisted that that was his driveway that they were operating this motor, these motorbikes on. It implies ownership over the road. And it was a very gray area and unfortunately, nobody got hurt, but it creates a problem with who owns what. Right now, the class six standards are pretty clear, who owns the road, who can use the road. There is no ambiguity in that. If we start applying driveway standards to that, that opens up a can of worms. The other part of this is there have been two applicants on class six roads trying to get building permits that we have denied, either the select board or the plan, I think they were both at the select board. One of them has already reached out to me that if this is approved, they will be suing the town. Because they were denied because they were forced to put, the, the standard that we had imposed upon them was to a class five standard. Not that it had to be a class five road, but it had to be built out to a class five standard. That is, a 60-foot right of way secured by those people from the abutters so that in the future, as it happens with every other private road that we have had in these 55 and older communities and everything like that, where they're not going to get trash pickup, they're not going to get town services, and all of a sudden, I'm out plowing these roads because all they need is 25 friends to get it on the ballot, and it becomes our problem. Things happen. You know, someone could say they're going to be here forever, but families break up, finances go wrong, and it's someone else who's in that house, and suddenly they want things. And there are mechanisms for them to get those things. So we can make certain agreements with current property owners, but there is no carrying that forward. Anything could be undone at the ballot box. And so these decisions will have longer-term ramifications for the town where we're suddenly maintaining this road or someone is putting a development in because we've already opened the door.
Thank you.
Are there houses on 1, 1A, 1B in that 50-foot right of way at the end of Thorn up here?
Oh, Bob Beenzel.
On Thorn Road, yeah.
But see where, on page.
There's a house on 1.
There's a house on 1.
There's a house on 1A that's reached through Tucker Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that through the, it, it comes through that 50-foot right of way?
It comes through Tucker Road.
Which is a north-south road that comes off Thorn.
Well, I see where Tucker is, right?
Yep. So 1B, 1A is off Tucker Road.
And is that?
It does have frontage on back, but they came before the planning board and they're reached through Tucker Road. Their houses on Tucker.
Is Tucker a class five?
Tucker is, yeah, go ahead, Phil.
So Tucker is a class five road up to that driveway, but I think it's 50 or 75 feet past where their driveway is currently, where that one was allowed, and then it becomes a class six road after that. And I believe the other lot on there has frontage on McMillan, and that is how they were able to build on there off of Thorn Road or off of Back Road.
1B, I don't believe, has a house.
No, that was just taken off of Bob Beenzel.
Yep.
May I speak again? And I think this is really, I think this is really good discussion. We're not asking the board for anything tonight. We're here for a discussion, obviously. We have nothing before this board. I, I believe there's an engineering pathway to make this a safe and viable project for the homeowner. There's some work to do. Property owner. I'm already, I'm already ahead. I'm an engineer, we can solve it.
I don't want that reflection.
Understood, understood. Property owner. So that's real, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we're here tonight knowing that there is a history in the town, there is some difference of opinion on our side on, on how things have been discussed without being presented. So we're trying to get together the best path forward that identifies and responds to the concerns of all stakeholders. So I, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, we're not here trying to say we're doing this. It's, hey, we'd like to do this, can we get some input so we can develop a plan that, that's reasonable and, and can achieve everybody's goal.
And I have a question for you. Now that I think about it, is it, would it be theoretically possible to put a 20-foot wide driveway for the chief and have the other side of Back Road be left available for ATVs and snowmobile trails like bike paths that are now?
That's a whole other discussion because we're coming to, you know, find out the information. We're planning to come forward with a plan that provides reasonable, safe access for review, hopefully approval without a line. So we're trying to get the info on what else may be, you know, blind spots from us to include in that plan. Previous examples and otherwise, I'm not sure which, which residents ran, you know, reached out. From what I read in the minutes and the videos I watched, they weren't dictated that they needed to improve it to a class five road standards. They were told it needed to become a class five road. We believe that is a judgment for reverence, and so we've used the term driveway repeatedly to outline that, that box that we believe provides reasonable, safe access. So essentially, my answer, we're coming here to say, we, we understand this box, what we understand for reasonable, safe access, what else besides that box should be included in our plan coming forward so that we can try to eliminate that and include that and not, you know, for the benefit of the process? The, and I think that's kind of the, you know, my little outline of what, the previous examples had not been, provided a outline of the improvement. It was only that that was required, as you read the notes there, Eli, I think your comment and one of them was, well, it's a moot point because we don't have a process. So, and so we started the select boards, what is the process? We're coming here, so okay, we understand, we're going to come in here, we're going to provide a plan for reasonable, safe access. You know, is there any other thoughts we need to include in this as we come forward? We're trying to make sure we have a communicative and, you know, group session moving forward.
Without imposing any burdens on the town at the same time.
Thank you for your input. I think we'll take this back to private discussion, to planning board discussion.
Have anybody else wanted to come?
Well, it isn't a public.
I know, it's not, but it's.
But if anyone else in the public would like to speak, I think it would probably be appropriate. Okay. Anything you want to say in addition to Selt? Anything you want to say in addition to Selt's comments?
My comments.
You're pretty close. No, that's what I meant, yeah.
I'm mainly under the 17th Thorn Road, which is up in that area. You have to get better seats. I feel like I'm in kindergarten. I guess this has been a really creative discussion on how one could develop the roads and roadways and all if one wanted to grant the ability of a party to build a house on a class six road. I guess my thought is, we have an ordinance that says you have to have, the, the house has to be built on a class five road. We have a driveway regulation that says driveways must enter on a class five road. And so I guess to me, the issue isn't how, how would we do this, but whether the town would want to do this, to grant the ability for somebody to build a house on a class six road. To this point, the town hasn't approved any of those implications. And so the town, if it decided to consider this, would be actually treading on all new ground and setting all new precedents, which I think is a tough road to hoe for the town over the long haul. Pardon me? I didn't even. I heard the gentleman say that this is an attempt to see how we can provide Mr. Hartwell with reasonable access to his property. And, and I believe Mr. Hartwell has a reasonable access to his property at this point because he can traverse the class six road to get to his property to do whatever it is that he wants to do out there, other than build a house, which he hasn't been approved for yet. So I guess basically, I, I think the, my thought is the discussion, the creative discussion about how one would be able to develop a scenario where one could build on a, on a class six road is interesting. But to me, the pivotal question is, does the town want to go forward and approve something like that and set the precedent for the future?
Thank you, Ronnie. Any other comment?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good one because this discussion that, that was on the OEP conference concluded in discussion about whether something's a taking or not. This is what we're leaning to is to whether there's any taking of use of the property. And there's two things to consider. One is if a zoning ordinance went, or some ordinance, town ordinance went into effect after, you know, when the person who owned the land and was expecting to build a house there, that was back in the 1800s, was on South, you know, on, on that road, and would expect to be able to build a house there and, and have access. But that's not the case. This isn't somebody who's owned for over 100 years and, and wants to use this for something that they might have been expected to do. When he bought the property, that ordinance was in effect, it's, it's actually a state law too, as, as Pat pointed out. And the exceptions, as the attorneys have pointed out, there's a panel of three attorneys at the OEP conference, the exceptions are there to allow someone to put up a structure that will not be occupied. So all these talk about going to ZBA or whatever to, 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 to get use of the land. There is, they made a point to say, there is no taking. ZBA could grant relief for an unoccupied structure, such as a Sugar Shack was the example they used, that would allow for reasonable use of the property. So reasonable So reasonable use of the property, farsh-related, recreation-related, and anything else, is what, when the owner purchased this property, was the, the available uses. And so there is, the US and New Hampshire Supreme Courts have upheld zoning laws as legal, and they've ruled that it's not the best or ultimate use of the land. In other words, the most profitable use of the land that determines what a use of the land. So the point that Ernie was making, and, and others have made tonight, is that there is no taking of the use, the expected use of the land, as, as you pointed out, when too. And so, I, I agree with Ernie that we shouldn't be bending over backwards to try to figure out how to get around the state law and town regulations to create a, some, a occupied structure that would be the only property that's on that hood, maybe Graham's on the south side, but that would be benefited at all by having Class 5 standard upgrade. And as I said, that pointed out earlier, and in the Selt letter has pointed out, that there's all sorts of, of significant obstacles to, to doing that, and there is a final remedy, and that is that if they want to go for a warrant article, it takes two-thirds, under this 674, there is a, there is a, an avenue for the applicant to, to go to the town to create a warrant article, and it would need a two-thirds vote. And if the town agreed that they wanted to, to allow that, then that would could, that's, that's the other possibility. So there is relief.
Any other thoughts? Yes. I don't know.
The question was, if the property's in current use. It's currently in there?
Yep.
Completely encumbered with, okay. So you'd be taking that out with retroactive tax implications as well? Okay.
Elliot? Anybody else? Do we have a motion for a recommendation?
Yeah, I'd, I'd move that, that the board make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that the request for a waiver to the building, the regulations to bill on, on the Class 6 road be denied. It would be, the recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen would deny the request. That's not, that is why the Board of Selectmen, they're here at the request of, sorry, we're here at the request of the Board of Selectmen, under the terms of Article of, let's say, 674-4, that the local government governing body, the Board of Selectmen, after review and comment by the planning board. So we're here to review and comment. It's not a hearing on, on their proposed plan.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it, just to move on the conversation. So I recommend that we just say that it just doesn't meet the requirements, and that's it. That's our recommendation to the Select Board.
Right, okay, that's better.
Simple as that.
Would you like to reword your motion?
Sure, we'll recommend the Board of Selectmen, and Eli can take this with her, that the proposed use of the Class 6 highway, sorry, the lot in question does not meet the requirements of 200-foot frontage on a Class 5 or better road.
Before we pull on, I, just, just a quick question. Is part of Back Road Class 5, and the other part Class 6?
No.
Tucker?
Thorn, Thorn Road is Class 5.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, we have trouble. I did. Any further comments? I think Miley, go ahead.
I, I plan to abstain from this, since I'll have an opportunity to weigh in at the Select Board meeting, and I did learn a lot more tonight than I knew when you had all come before us. I'm still not sure which way I'm going to go, but I, I definitely will do more homework.
Yeah. I think my only thought is that if the town wants to turn Class 6 roads into Class 5 roads or something in between, then we really need to spend a long time, do a lot of thought, put together a warrant, put together a zoning article, and, you know, and just do it.
As our Public Works Director will tell you, paving, just keeping them paved, it'll be 32 years before we all do it at the rate we're going, so.
Oh, I'm aware of that.
Did I get that right, Phil? Okay.
Absolutely.
I am, I am.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, if, if there's to be a determination of taking, you know, Class 6 roads and doing something else with them, then certainly that's a much bigger discussion for a lot of other pieces of property and a lot of other things, and we shouldn't just do it case by case.
Yeah, and I'm one of the older residents who came here and lived on the dirt road, bought a house on the dirt road, and had to pay with my neighbor's stake, put the dirt, paved road in.
Yep.
And that was the standard way you're getting, and then you would go to the town meeting and ask the town to take over. Once we had already paid to pave it, so.
And those votes that were paved at that time all had to be to town standards at that time. They all had to meet that, those town standards at that time.
Were they changed by warrant articles, as Peter mentioned? So I mean, like the path forward, to, to get that changed to a, that would take a town vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That would be the recommendation, then, I think.
And that's typically how it's done, so. I mean, there's also, I live on Ball Road, and, and I mean, they wanted to make that road a Class 5, make it 20 feet, and all the townspeople in Ball Road said, "No, they're not doing it." And we voted it not done. I mean, they spent billions of dollars trying to build out a better Ball Road, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that would be unanimous. Any more extension? Thank you very much for coming. We need to take a five-minute break. Now, we're going to take a five-minute break. Called the meeting back to order. The next issue, or the next topic for tonight, is Pedro Vila, who is our Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer, who is going to be talking with us about perhaps changes to the zoning ordinances to coincide with the current codes and regulations for building and zoning. Pedro, welcome.
Hi. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to participate. So, to start off, I want to thank the board. I have seen the changes that took place in the last warrant articles actually improved the ordinance. However, in the research of it, I have found a couple of things that might be of benefit to the quick review and addressing any kind of questions and concerns to the ordinance. I prepare and I provide to every one of you what is called a table of residential district standards. It's a dimensional regulation table, where I take all of the zoning district. I break them down, and I take the parts and dimension pertaining to each district, so that, and, and that assists, has assisted me, or assisted me, in the process of reviewing an application when it comes to my hand. That can be a resource for the future ordinance and for a warrant article, to have a table like such, pulling all the numbers of each zoning district in a table format that can be quickly researched and addressed, especially for professional designers and engineers and people coming in contact with town, seeking to search for variances and waivers, equitable waivers, and things of that nature. One thing, though, that I have encountered is that the, the ordinance, how it reads, especially in the building development section, building lots section, it's Article 300, Section 300, Article 3, 301. The numbers within that article, in some instances, are different to the ones that are directly input in the zoning district. And that, that, that might be a, a source of confusion in the event somebody's doing a development within the town. And in the table, you will see that there are areas, you have two numbers, and those are the areas that, I pulled those. One are directly from the zoning district ordinance, the other are from Section 300, Article 3, 301. So I'm, I'm in the process of dealing with the new comments I have. I'm waiting, because we're in the process of changing the edition of the code, and I need to see if it's implemented, when it's implemented. And if we're going to start 2025 with a new code, then at that point, I'll have to research for the, the ordinance throughout this year, prior to get to next year, and probably before we get to October and sit down with the town planner, Glenn Greenwood, to provide a list of things that I've seen through the ordinance that has to match the state building code. I guess. But other than that, I, it, it's, I have seen changes that are very productive for the town, and I just want to be able to create those. Ordinances are very clear with the intent and purpose. One thing that I will definitely be advocating for is for a corner lot ordinance with regards to fencing due to visibility issues. Creating proper setbacks on corner lots when somebody wants to erect a fence, whether natural or whether it's vegetation or a vinyl fence or a fabricated fence, because that can lead to, to safety issues. But again, those are the things that are in the work right now. I'm trying to see what is the most beneficial item for the town, and start putting them all together. It's been challenging, but, but we're moving forward, and the, like I said, my, my whole intention is to make the points of the ordinance very clear to the public, the general public.
So in your chart, where you have commercial zone 1 and 10 acres, that's only for multifamily?
Multifamily, and it's, it's, and that's another thing, it's within that building, a building and lots regulation. I believe it should be set up within the actual song, zoning district. Because people might overlook that, even myself in the position, can overlook those items if I don't go page by page and take my, my pace on doing that, but, but the thing with that is that add up, that add up time for the review process, and people don't like time. They don't like, they have come to the conclusion that waiting is not in the mood of the people.
But it'd be helpful if they gave you plans that had numbers on them.
Yes, also, also, also if they don't give it to me in different phases, like, this is what, what I got, that helps.
So how would you like to move forward with this, Pedro?
So I would like to definitely, August, get another joint session, where I'll bring more details, I'll be more descriptive of the ordinance, the intents, and things that we can add up to our current ordinance to be part of the upcoming warrant article for next year.
I was thinking you might want to add the wetlands and shorelands districts, because they have different setback requirements and stuff that, that-
As well, and that's why I want-
If you make this three-dimensional, it'd be great.
Yes, and that's exactly why, I believe, if I can get that extra time to come in August, I'll be able to see how I can merge them together and make it in a clear manner in a table of this nature that can be added to the warrant article, so that is something that is, is there. And it'd make allusion or reference to the actual ordinance.
And they've just changed some of the shoreline stuff statewide.
As well.
Although ours was more stringent, and the stringent one will, so unless they've changed something to make it more stringent than ours-
They've changed septic, and they've got done away with site assessment. Which we didn't have.
Right, so if, if that's something that's not in our ordinance, then the state would go- It's a bit like the building height.
That is correct.
Our ordinance has how you measure the height of the building at the top, but not where you start from. And the state building code has-
That, that is correct.
Where you start from, the plane that you start at, but then has a different definition of the height.
It will depend for height, yep.
Highest part of the roof, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
And I, I definitely will be sitting with Mr. Greenwood. He's, he's my go-to guy. He's my go-to guy.
He's my go-to guy.
All the time.
This is good.
He's right for impervious surface?
Surface, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, they are right. And also, I want to make a notion into this. You have, within the ordinance, these impervious surfaces come into lot coverage area, that I would like to make sure that we can separate, those are two different things, to what is impervious surface and lot coverage. Lot coverage serves to the purpose of making the limitations, or limitations to what is the space that can be built within a lot based on the percentage of the total size of the lot. Impervious surface coverage is what we are allowing them to modify within the surface that will prevent the surface to infiltrate its natural resources, meaning water and drainage and things like that. So there are two different things that has to be separated within the ordinance.
My point is, is this isn't direct, this should give us a direct answer whether we want to have duplexes or quadplexes, because if you think about it, I mean, 255 bedrooms, if I do that in duplexes, I was doing some math the other day, it's like 135 buildings. I have quadplexes and it's only 85 buildings, right? Still 255, yeah, but it's still 255. Instead of having more buildings taking up more area, less buildings, they might be a little bit bigger, but...
True, but we have other things that interact with the built environment. We have also the conditions that we are on septic and wells. And then you have to keep clearances on that thing. So there are many mechanics within the development of a piece of land that comes into play when it's about this. And when we're talking about an amount of unit of that nature, if we would like to diminish the amount of land to be used in order for sewage drainage, we're talking a septic...
And that's my point. It's probably better to have less buildings within a 10-acre piece of land than 135 buildings within a 10-acre.
I can see and agree to that comment and why.
Easier to have the distance from septic.
Right, exactly.
Distance from the wells, yeah. And in the commercial zones, you have the normal coverage area and then the amount if they use an infiltration system.
That is correct.
But how about if that particular commercials, that particular lot is also in the aquifer protection zone, it's going to have a different number too?
That is correct. It actually reduced that drastically. But also there is a number there based on square footage of the building that actually interacts with the development. So there are many places, I'm just trying to see a full way with the new ordinance that came into place as of March on how to allocate all those numbers within a simple place that can make reference and allusion to all that so that it can be tackled right at the point of either review or anybody developing land.
Yeah, I think you're going to end up with a lot of little footnotes, you know, little numbers and say, well, if then, statements underneath, you know?
That is correct.
If it's a QZ, then, you know, then C page.
I do like the idea of having a chart though. I think it's easier for people to read.
Yes. And it's not only that it's easy for people to read, also for department-wise and wanting, for example, health-wise, the health officer of the town, there is a lot of numbers specific to developing the land within the health environment portion of it with regards to septic, aquifer protection, subwaters protection areas. And one thing key that I was just arguing this morning with somebody is performing as a health officer, is the fact that our aquifer protection requires that when you're installing a septic and you have a high water table, you not only can go 24 inches above that after the, whatever distance you have for to the surface water, you got to go actually six feet above that point. And he was arguing that...
That's true.
That, well, no, it's only four and he mentioned somebody named Rachel Wilson explaining something of that nature. And I said, well, I don't know how it was explained, this is the way I have been reading it and this is what I understand of it. I'm open for a discussion, I'm open for you to show me your data and actually we have resources in the zoning ordinance. I mean, there is a waiver process that we can go through and you can go through the waiver. Although it is the responsibility of the health officer, I will definitely always advise for seeking guidance past the health officer zoning board or planning board as well.
Great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome to stay or you can go home?
It's been two 16-hour days, so I might be wrong. But thank you again.
Before Pedro leaves though, last night the board asked updated permit fees for all inspections throughout the town. And I wanted to mention again tonight because it would go into effect August 1st. So if you're going to have any work done, now's the time to get your fees in place, regardless of the size of the project. They have until August 1st to get the fees under the old schedule.
Definitely.
So this says proposed fees plus an application fee, what's the application fee?
67.50 is right at the bottom of the...
Okay.
Yep. And we, with those fees scheduled, so when, one of the things that I have been having a little bit of, there are challenges obviously. And I'm of the kind that if you cannot number it, you cannot manage it. So I need to be able to have numbers that relate to what I'm doing. And with the fees and how is the thing, the parts moving within the office, I have, I came to the conclusion that we were very under with regards to the services that we were rendering to the public out there based on the cost that we have for securing those services. So that's why it prompted me to update that information and the more open, really good points came about those yesterday as well. One is to have more clarification within that scheduled fees as to make people understand that the fees doesn't mean that you're going to get an application fee every time you apply for all type of things. It is very dependent on what you're doing, the work that you're doing. Like if you are doing a trade work, you're an electrician, a plumber, a mechanical engineer, installing a boiler, probably a new service, you don't need a building permit for those. So because you don't need a building permit for those, we need to charge you an application fee that is for the purpose of reviewing the type of permit that you are requesting and issuing the permit. And then we have the cost for the service that you are going to be getting in addition to that. But that will match also the amount of inspections that we have to do in order to make sure that things are done to the standard of the law.
So one other question, like for example, the first thing is shed, $4.25 per 1,000, is that 1,000 square feet?
$1,000.
Dollars of value for the project?
Or part, or part of 1,000, I make a part of 1,000, that way we can round, round up to the next 1,000 on that, on that sense. I mean, we're talking, I haven't seen a $10,000 shed, but you never know where it's 42.50 and then 67.50 is $109.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. You guys have a wonderful night. I'll be looking forward to seeing you again.
Safe travels. Okay. The next item on the agenda is One Lincoln Circle, R35, 45-23. William C. Jerome IV revised ADU plans to increase the size of the ADU per the 324 amended ordinance. Conditional use permit was approved, 12, 13, 20, not 24, 23?
Do you want to do something?
Conditional use permit was approved.
Oh, yeah, I thought you were...
That should be 23?
Actually, 22, I think.
22? Okay. So...
That was just an...
Welcome, Liam.
Over a year and a half ago, I came to you guys to propose an ADU for my in-laws. It was kind of a long drawn out process with Glenn and it ultimately resulted in me sitting at this table now. So basically, what the ordinance read when we first came to the board was that I was allowed to build a dwelling that was separate from my primary structure, up to 30% of the GLA of my primary dwelling, which is 2156. We built a structure with a finished area of about 718 square feet, so one bedroom, clearly outlined in this plan here for you. With a little bit of foresight and hope on my behalf, we included a partial loft that was originally slated to be cold storage with the hope that someday this ordinance would be changed because we felt that 700 square feet was pretty small. And we got lucky because the ordinance did change and I didn't know about it until I sat down at the table and then I was like, no kidding, all right, well, I guess it's time to write the letter and come see if we can ask for that space to be finished. So ultimately, it is a somewhere between 250, 280 square foot addition in space. It does not have any additional impact in my septic system, which would be set for a two-bedroom in the detached, septic plans and everything are attached in the site plan. We did install an additional 1,250 gallon tank. Both tanks now on my property leach into the same field. It is a stone and pipe field that is more than adequate and operating perfectly according to epping well and septic. It's not slated that this would be a bedroom at this time. There's no reasonable area for me to put a closet in to consider it a bedroom. I think it would be more of a extended living area and living room, maybe loft, office, et cetera. It is a closed-off space because it was cold storage. It has a full staircase. I will meet code requirements for all of the handrails and everything that needs to go up there to prevent anyone from falling down that set of stairs. There's a door at the base of the stairs, so it'll be a very easily conditioned space. No impact on the overall footprint of the building itself and I'm open to any comments or questions that you might have. The total square footage is still under 1,000, which is less than the 50% GLA that is currently laid out. I would be probably closer to 1050 or 1100 square feet now that we've finished the basement in my house as well. We're still under it, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Glenn, what's your suggested procedure?
Yes, I asked Liam to put this information together because as a result of having granted the conditional use permit, that was required by the planning board because this is not an attached ADU. But since there are no changes proposed by this addition to the building that we approved with that conditional use permit, I, I thought, I told Liam that I thought this is simply something we should provide as additional information to the building inspector so that he is aware that it's not unknown to the planning board, but there really is no, there's no reason to reintroduce the public process for this. The law allows for 50%, excuse me, for 50%. And this doesn't make any change, any extra changes to the building, so there would be no reason to reinstitute a second conditional use process before the planning board. But I wanted the board to make that decision, not me.
Okay. So if that decision were made, the procedure would be for us to ask you to write a letter to go in the file?
Correct.
Send it to...
Write a letter actually to go to the building inspector.
Okay.
Stating that the planning board was aware of this change as a result of the warrant article being changed in March.
Right, because our conditional use permit, as you said, it's only for expanding the primary residence or making it an outside one. So that, he already has...
He's already got that.
And so all the other conditions Pedro handles as building inspector, so he can look at all the plans before you choose a building permit, just make sure...
So it's not actually a separate permit, I don't think?
It's not, no.
It's literally, and I already have all the inspections and approvals for the, so all the framing and everything has, was already approved by Jess before he left.
Oh, I think you said the staircase...
There's a full staircase.
Okay, so that was already...
Yeah, like that, that was all approved. Everything is good. I'm just finishing the space as if it was a closet that we're putting sheet rock in.
And so in this...
It already exists.
So in this instance, it goes from being what was discussed at the conditional use permit process as being cold storage to actually being part of the residential living area.
But the attic always had a full staircase that was not dropped down. It was like just a walk-up staircase.
Not a building permit then, yeah.
Correct. Same permit, there's really minimal impact. The only benefit is to my in-laws to have the additional living space.
Correct.
Because 700 square feet is like living in this table.
My first apartment is smaller than that.
So do we need a vote or...
I'd prefer there be a vote.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved, yes, I'll second, whatever it was.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Rob and I will make sure we understand what that motion is.
I expect Glenn's going to go in the...
The new information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liam.
Thanks, Liam.
Graham, if you wouldn't mind joining us, we'd like to also talk about roof height for zoning. And then we're going to Kingston Fairways. So Graham, our discussion has been around the fact that there are people that want to, both commercial and residential, that want to add a structure taller than the approved height of buildings in certain districts that would not, would be like a cupola or a bell tower or something like, similar to what we have in the town hall.
Well, I don't think that was the primary driving force. Most of them are where the top ridge lines are in excess, like 10 feet or so of the...
Well, that was, that was the main thing that I think we were talking about, that it wouldn't, when Liam was talking, it wouldn't be inhabited, inhabited space, it would just be other space.
Didn't we also say though, that potentially the development at the old science center, we're going to run into an issue where there was a third story?
Oh, yeah, the seminary building.
In the seminary building, proposed as habitable space.
And they should buy us a ladder truck.
But that's, that's a renovation other than a new construction, so I'm not sure...
But it wasn't previously occupied?
That's an existing, previously occupied space.
Well, it was because when it was a school, that's considered occupied, you know, business, you're there for eight hours a day.
And prior, presumably was a seminary and people lived there, right?
No.
No, 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 seminary is the term for school.
Strictly classroom.
The high school.
In fact, there's a story above that, that my parents had chaplain, that was not inhabitable. When I went there, we just had club meetings up there.
But although it has been finalized, their design plans for the multifamily units that are going to replace the science building, the heights on those...
Are excessive.
Could be challenging, so we need to understand this.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, was the back of the science building.
Okay.
Yeah, those, they've had, there's nothing been finalized, but in their discussions with the historic district commission, at one point they were at four stories.
Yes, yes.
And I think they backed down to three.
Well, there's three in the front, but there's four in the back because you have ended...
Because you have the elevation change.
The driveway back down, yes.
So I mean, it's a, it's an important discussion to be had.
Okay, so we're here.
So I am unfamiliar, other than myths and hearsay, of why that was put into place for the 30-foot, I believe, for residential and 35 for commercial. I can only assume it has to do with not having access to a ladder truck in the town and also to limit the height of buildings within neighborhoods. So I guess it's kind of a twofold thing. Liberty Commons came and met with us in kind of a pre-construction meeting with Glenn and Phil Coombs, DPW. They wanted to do like a bell tower on their main building. I told them that I would be okay with that as long as it was uninhabitable and sprinkled. The only issue we would have, we have mutual aid agreements with every surrounding town, so for any smoke in a building, either it's Hampstead or Exter's ladder that is automatically dispatched, same for any first alarm structure fire, so we have a ladder coming. We are getting more potential developments with the warehouse at 266 for 125, Chinburg's property at the seminary building, Liberty Commons, that will probably at some point in the future, not today, but at some point necessitate Kingston having its own ladder truck, placement on a ladder truck being the first... Placement on a ladder truck being the first vehicle in because the ladder only reaches so far. You know, if you put an engine in a tanker in front of it, then you're not reaching the building with a ladder. So the necessity to have it be kind of first on scene is paramount. So I am not opposed to allowing an ordinance change for bell towers, cupolas, or again, any uninhabited. I guess I would request it to be sprinkled if, if allowed by the board, I guess, just because as of right now, our tallest ladder is 30 feet. It's a four-fly ladder, meaning it has four sections. I have two people on duty that can not regularly deploy that in a good manner. It doesn't look pretty. So if that was to be habitable space or a fire in the cupola and it wasn't sprinkled, then we'd have access problems getting to it.
And that type of building, would the requirement be to have sprinklers in the rest of the building?
Yeah, so any multifamilies, three or more in the town of Kingston.
So that would not be a hardship to.
Yep, so Liberty Commons is totally fine with, I think the height, don't quote me on it, but it was like 40 something feet, and he had no problem just adding a sprinkler head in it and.
Except that was going in C1, which is 4,500, I mean, 45 feet high.
Or maybe it was more.
It was, it was 55 when it came, and that is not about anything to do with the cupola. That was to the ridge line of the top of the roof. The cupola was different, it was excluded from our considerations as adornment or whatever. That would have taken it up to maybe 65, 70 feet or something like that, but their ridge line, which is what we use in our ordinance as the height of a building, is, was 55. So we should be very careful that we don't start using the term cupola or bell tower or anything else, because when we're talking about height, we're talking about the ridge line height and not the, any adornments added to it. And we were fine with the idea of it being on, because you came in, or the fire department represented that it was acceptable as long as uninhabitable. Anything over 35 feet should not be inhabited, and that, that area under the roof was just structure and maybe potential storage.
Yeah, so you actually triggered my memory because that was last year's.
Yeah, I know as well.
So the ridge line was, or the fourth floor, I guess, if you would call it, was just going to be cold storage and no, nothing up there.
Right.
Same thing, that would still be sprinkled and not any living space up there.
Yeah, and it kind of sailed through until the hardship thing came up.
So we need to change our ordinance to add the mandatory sprinkling for buildings over a certain height?
And 35 is, sounds like a kind of random number, but it actually came from the state's default zoning regulation way back in the 60s or whenever they produced it, so that a town could adopt the state zoning regulations without having to create, you know, go through the whole process of creating their own and then, then go from there. So that's why when, you know, something came up about, oh, for that particular commercial zone that came up for Liberty Common, came up, we looked back at the minutes and Rich Saint-Hilaire, who was on the fire department at the time, obviously, and he just, he was on the planning board and said, oh, yeah, we'd be comfortable with 35. And they knocked it down from 45, which was the C, whatever, C1 requirement.
Yeah, so the Liberty Commons bell tower and the fourth floor is the closest one that I've been involved in. The one before that was Benaveto's hot top plant, the asphalt plant down there by Torneo and Galloway's.
Oh, that was the smoke shack, that was.
Yeah, they were above that, but again, it was inhabited, habitable, so I was fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay. So our goal is to take care of this stuff like this summer into September so that we're not doing it all in November, December.
But on this one, I'd like to work with Pedro.
Yeah.
Because he really does want to look at that and vote in.
Yeah. So maybe Pedro and you and Graham can get together and determine exactly what the changes need to be. Come forward and we can take a vote.
Based on.
Yep. Okay, sounds like a plan.
All right.
Thank you, so you're the way to the whole meeting.
Yeah, and while you're doing it, either adopt the state standard for the base level, you know, the plane, base plane, because we don't have it in our ordinance.
For.
For determining building height.
I think that's what Pedro's going to try to do.
Yeah, just use the state's definition, which is, takes an average of the distance six feet away from the building of all four sides or whatever, and it takes an average instead of using the highest plate or the lowest, which is.
Yeah, we are actually seeing a lot of buildings, and we have some in town that are just like the proposed science building apartments that are three stories in the front, or two, in Kingston, two stories in the front, but then if we need access to the back, then it's three stories.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is 57 Depot Road, the old Kingston Fairways, R28-1. Ellie, did something happen at the meeting last night that you'd like to share with us?
Well, one of the things happened last night that I definitely may be here with you, the board was asked last night to hold a special town meeting for the folks at 57 Depot Road that are buying the Kingston Fairways because they want to do 55 age-restricted housing as opposed to a general housing development. In order to do that, they, we allow 55-plus housing in Kingston, but not on that particular lot. Now, I had the opportunity, I asked Rob of a copy of the minutes when they were here the last time. They did not bring up the fact to the SLUG board that in the back, the clubhouse and the golf course is actually going to be in East Kingston, but the housing units will all be in Kingston. So they wanted us to agree to a special town meeting. We were not prepared to do so because we didn't know exactly what the regulations say, and there are restrictions of whether you can go to Superior Court, whether you're not going to raise money, and I don't remember all the details, and they may have changed since the last time I looked. But they wanted some, I guess, a sense of direction from you as well. They were willing to pay for the extra meeting, but I don't think, they were wondering whether or not they could come to the planning board. Have you changed the ordinance to allow zoning in that location? Let me finish. Don't even jump in there, there's more to it. So, and then they could, once you passed it, if you pass the change to that area, then they could go ahead and get their permits and stuff and go to the town meeting in March, but take the chance that it may not pass. That's kind of a risky area to expect anyone to go through. They also could, as petitioners, they could get 50 signatures and go right to town meeting or to get 50 signatures to call for town meeting anyway, is my understanding, I'm not exactly sure, but I'm not sure the board really wants to have a special town meeting, quite honestly.
Call a special town meeting with just 50.
Yeah, I believe you can petition 50 signatures.
We have an old moderator here that might even, and the newer moderator. So is that going to get us into a spot zoning situation?
Well, that's, that was raised last night. That was my next comment. We said, well, that sounds like spot zoning. It's not like it.
Unless we did it other places too.
Right.
Yes, we would just want to call out that parcel of land and say, we're having this as a parcel that can have age-restricted development because we have, we have two zones for it specifically. We have the old elderly zone of Scotland Road that is really, for all intents and purposes, built out.
Correct.
Because there's a lot, big lot in there still. It's really wet, so I don't think there's development potential there. And then we have the area in the northern part of the town.
That's also been zoned for, oh, that's evil, that's also been zoned for age-restricted. We could simply do something through zoning that said, age-restricted housing is an overlay permitted in these areas, and this could be one of those areas. But we don't want to just do the one lot, that's crazy. But we can't, the planning board can't look at a development that doesn't comply with zoning and give an approval and then hopefully get the ordinance changed in March.
Just wanted to be sure.
It's against the law for us to consider something that isn't allowed by zoning. So that's, that, we can't go that route.
And then we have two elections coming up, but it's my understanding you can't put town meetings and federal elections together at the same time?
I don't believe so, but you wouldn't have, the balance cannot be combined.
Right.
But I don't know that we couldn't still have.
But I do think there has to be space.
I think there has to be.
There has to be time-space between.
I think so, and.
But why?
I don't know why they're rushing it. I think if they want to.
Yeah.
Right, why would the town do that for a zoning issue? We've never.
I agree, I was just.
We've never done that. Why, why set that precedence that all of a sudden, if somebody doesn't like zoning in town, that we hold a special town meeting to change it before the next town meeting?
They could go for, to the ZBA, but I think it's too big a project for something at the ZBA, to be honest with you. And it opens up that whole spot zoning, they can't prove a hardship there.
Right.
Exactly.
How could they prove a hardship?
They can build houses.
If they can build 50 houses at one price, but they'd rather build 150 houses at another price and make more money.
That's not a hardship.
That's not a hardship, not even close, not even close.
It's not, because the application of the ordinance didn't create the hardship. In this case, they're saying there isn't an ordinance, there isn't the ordinance they want to be able to be applied, but there's a perfectly reasonable ordinance in place that allows a lot of economic benefit to be gained by a property owner.
And in fact, would be consistent with the housing crisis, whereas.
Yes, whereas senior housing isn't really the segment of housing that people are considering or considering in crisis.
We want to encourage people to build housing that.
We already have six, five or six restricted age developments in Kingston anyways.
We do.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a number of units with age restrictions.
Which is condensed and allows more people to live in a smaller area. It's five, it's either five or six. Which is okay, but we, we didn't know at that time, I still haven't, it's not quite 24 hours, whether, what the law says about a special town meeting. If it, they could petition, if that's my, that's my understanding, they could petition, 50 people could sign a request for a special election.
And then who determines?
But I didn't think it could for zoning.
I don't know that, that's, we don't know that.
I don't, I don't think that that's the case. I think that's, that it's the case that special town meetings can be done for purposes, like business purposes for the town.
It used to be, you'd have to go to Superior Court because you, let's say you ran out of money.
Yeah.
Or you had a major catastrophe in town and therefore needed to raise funds at a different time of year. Then you'd appeal to Superior Court and you could come in.
And sometimes it would be a union contract, I think.
A union contract, that's correct.
I think it could be a union contract.
That was another circumstance.
But we have had so many people that have had to wait, and just, just what came before us last, last meeting.
Yeah.
They waited, you know, it doesn't seem right.
It doesn't, it just doesn't seem that a zoning issue is an issue that creates that kind of necessity for a special out-of-sequence meeting.
It's not that far off, because by the time you get to stuff the information together and post a hearing, you're talking the fall no matter what.
Well, you've got to actually get the wording for the zoning ordinance together, and that requires a couple of meetings and discussion and everything else.
And you'd have to want to change.
Something we could start now and would be ready for March.
For March, exactly.
Correct, because I think you're right, Glenn, if you did it, you know, designate certain parts of land that should they become developable, they could be used, then you don't run into the.
The idea of having just one parcel.
Spot zoning and making it.
Given these different privileges.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I think I got it.
The discussion there, he was developing it and then he was going to sell. He was going to get all the permits in line and then sell the project, which would, that would, in my, be the reason for the timeline. Why rush it? You can't sell the project unless you got the.
But the owners are just ready to sell.
Right.
And they can't sell because the contract says contingent on permitting.
Even, even in March, you might have 30 percent, 35 percent voted turnout, which is not bad. We used to get more, but people are less likely to participate. The presidential one is the one that really calls out, cast a thousands, but I think we have restrictions on what we can or cannot do on that day for electioneering. I believe there are statutes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that the special.
I know you can't combine the ballots, that I know for sure, but you could have another, you might be able to have another ballot, but you'd have to petition, I think, Superior Court to do that. I don't think it benefits the petitioner in the long run. The people have a right to decide, and they decide in March, and they used to do in that. And I think that's when they should do it, that's my personal opinion.
Okay, well, the statute of privacy at 315, the special town meetings, it's not 50 people, it's 50 percent of all voters.
Oh, 50, really? That is a huge difference.
That is a way different figure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have over 4,000 registered voters.
That's a very different figure.
And it requires an emergency.
That's what.
And it's only appropriate funds in an emergency.
Oh, okay, so then it doesn't apply.
You're having a choice of either 50 percent of all voters on the checklist must attend the special meeting, just, they say it's not like.
Must attend?
Must attend, or the Superior Court must grant permission for the meeting in advance. And that's what you were talking about, petition. But when you look at the actual statute, it gives you.
What's the number there?
31, called five, special meetings. And it says emergency for the purposes of, and then you have to verify that the emergency exists, and it's all about getting funds.
See, there is no emergency.
There is no emergency, no.
I mean, there could be a personal financial emergency with the one buyer of this, of this property, but I'm sorry, that doesn't constitute an actual emergency for the town.
No, this is only appropriate funds, as you had mentioned.
That's what I saw, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a very high threshold. It's a very high threshold.
No, we haven't, the only place we get more than 50 percent is at the presidential level.
Right, right.
And we've had as high as 86.
And maybe the town did a special town meeting for the landfill closure back in the late 80s.
No, it was not, no.
Nope.
It was not regular town meeting.
Regular town meeting.
Town meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I wanted to bring that forward and I can let my colleagues know that it's not a goal.
Any other business that may come legally before the board?
We did the minutes.
We did them.
We did the minutes.
We did the beginning, it's.
Rick was here and he wanted, he was interested in this discussion.
Oh, this one that we're talking about now? Okay.
I thought he was going to speak because he said that was why he stayed.
Okay, there you go. All right.
So he must have liked the way this was.
He must have liked the way it went.
Or I think he would have definitely said something.
There was one other thing that we passed, the Centipede trailer rentals that could spur short-term, so I got more information on that, and that was a very narrow path that, a very narrow decision that probably would not affect us, so we're good. Okay, there's nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Okay.